Monday, March 25th, 2024, and I now call this meeting the Witten Woods School Board to order. Mr. Seymour, can you call the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Spielman?
Here.
Dr. Johnson? Mrs. Knighton?
Present.
Ms. Bryant?
Present. And my apologies, everyone, I jumped ahead, we need to do our pledge of allegiance. Sorry, Agenda Item 1.02. So, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 2.01. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
The next part of the board meeting will be held in the, by the learning stairs. So, we'll move out there.
Do you need anything?
No, you do not.
So, this is 2.01, District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts and
Yeah, we're gonna do all the honors that, out there.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Come on. It's sunny outside, let's try it again, "Good Evening."
Good evening.
Okay, they're not paying attention, it's okay. Alright, where is Amira Adams? Amira, come on up. So, Mr. Tash wrote something great about you, alright? So, I want to read a little bit, is that okay?
Yes, it is.
Alright, sit on this side, right here. You know why I moved over here? Because this is my good side, so I need it over here. "Amira Adams was chosen as the High School Student of the Month for December, and I should say this long, this is long overdue. She entered the high school, she, since entering the high school, Amira has distinguished herself as one of the most outstanding students at Witten Woods. But here are the three factors that makes her outstanding: academics, character, and engagement. Currently, Amira is taking a very demanding course load that includes three college courses, and of course, she's earning straight A's." And there's, there's something, there's something in the bio that's pretty interesting. When I read it, it says "straight A's," and in parenthesis, it says "again." Yeah, so that lets you know this is not the first time, right? Okay. "She does this while being in the Academy of Global Studies, co-founding the craft club and being the secretary of the club, volunteering regularly at an animal shelter, and holding down a job in retail." Wow, Gucci? Prada? Okay, that's okay, alright, we'll get there. To say that she keeps herself busy is, is an understatement. Aside from being a stellar student, Amira is also a breath of fresh air to be around. She is person, she has a good sense of humor, and is wise beyond her years. She truly is one of the most well-rounded students I've ever encountered. Amira had the opportunity to be selected for the prestigious Early College Academy and attend college full-time this year, and next, but she turned it down. This, this was not because she was not up for the challenge, but rather because she was decided to study abroad for part of her senior year. Bravo. "Amira is very interested in Asian cultures and quite independently has become, has been communicating with companies looking for scholarships to make this dream a reality." You see this guy right here? He's gonna make that happen. Alright, so camera, make sure you pin on, yeah. That's Eric Martin Principal, he'll make sure that you get to study abroad, we'll figure this out. "Amira Adams is very deserving of this award, she makes me proud to be a warrior, bravo." A few words. A few words.
Well, I would just like to say thank you for the school, for this opportunity, because I feel like I could not be a greater student as I am today without the school and opportunities they give, they've given me throughout the years. I've gone to this school since about second grade, and I can say the people I've met, the teachers who have taught me, and just the experiences I've had have changed how I'm a person today. So, thank you.
So, family, family, who came with her tonight? Mom, come on up, let's get a photo, right here. Board members, who's, who's the guy? Who's the person?
You're paying for this, trying to shirt?
Okay, alright, he said it, right? Somebody record this.
We need the money for it, though. She's already accepted.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Y'all heard this, right?
I say a lot of stuff, so, yeah. So, good. Alright. The next recipient, which is, um, character's key, resourcefulness, Dylan Maldonado Martinez. Dylan's not here tonight? Ah, come on, alright. Gabriella Smith? Gabriella. Alright, Gabriella, stand right here while I read all this great stuff about you. "Gabriella is a senior student who truly displays all qualities of a Witten Woods warrior: trust, respect, and responsibility. In her four years of high school, she has participated in many groups, different organizations such as Student Council, National Honor Society, the Chick-fil-A Leadership Program, Prom Planning, and has been one of our student aides this year. Student aide is a newer position for our students here at Witten Woods. It provides some basic soft skills, awareness, but also an understanding of specific careers here at our buildings. Gabriella has spent her time as a student aide with our athletic program, assisting with football training, rehabs, and passing out water. Throughout her experience in such positions, she's had the opportunity to volunteer reading with the elementary students and planned a shoe drive with mental health awareness activities, fundraise, pet rally, parades, and many spirited weeks. Gabriella is a true warrior, in and out of assistance and giving all of herself every single day. Thank you, Gabriella." Get your certificate. Mom? Go right to the middle.
We can do a photo, girl.
Great. The next recipient, Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, Jasmine Calix. Not here tonight? Okay. We'll save this for Jasmine for next month, we know we'll catch up with her. Now, of course, great students need great teachers, and our Skyline Teacher of the Month is Ms. Christina Deal. She's probably working with some students right now, so, it's okay. And now, finally, we have, uh, the GIST School Designation. Witten Woods High School, Mr. Josh Amstead. Academy of Global Studies Coordinator. "The Board of Education congratulates the Academy of Global Studies at Witten Woods High School for being named a global, innovative, strategic, and transformative school by the Global Educational Community. From the organization's website formed in 2015 as a U.S. Basics 501(c)(3), the Global Educational Community, GEC, came together with one goal in mind: to transform education so all students acquire the skills and knowledge needed to succeed in a global economy." Mr. Amstead? With your nice bundles, right here, can you give us a little more information about why you took on this new initiative?
Yeah, what was that? Uh, you know, you, we can try, we can try. I have some great help, and I tried to hand off earlier, we'll see, we'll see, yeah, sure. Okay, great. So, I, I must say, so for the past 13 years, I've been part of Witten Woods City School District, and the one thing that brought me to this district, more so than any other thing, was the possibility of being able to do global education in a math classroom at its core. Uh, and I find out about this thing called the Academy of Global Studies that we started here, an initiative in the district, and I said, man, sign me up. Like, this is my cup of tea, for sure. I am someone who likes to progress, I don't like things that are stagnant. I think that in a world that we live in, with it being ever so changing, with having technology that transforms education, having multicultural awareness that impacts every single job you could possibly ever think of, it is more important now than ever to have that sense of globalization and to understand the world around you. So, that is why I endeavor and continue to endeavor to work with our kids, to work with our teachers, to work with our, our staff, to be able to make us as global as possible. So, this award, this distinguishment, is something that I think just encapsulates what this community stands for, which is progress, innovation, and becoming something greater than what anyone else thinks we could possibly be. Pushing the boundaries and really transforming education into what I think it should be and could be for all other districts. I also want to have two of our students actually who have come to speak on the matter come up, so I'm gonna have Gabe and Amira actually again come up, and they're gonna talk about the impact AGS has made on them.
So, when it comes to AGS as a whole in Witten Woods, it's truly a unique experience and opportunity that you get specifically through this school. And I feel like throughout my four years of being in the school, it's actually provided more than just opportunity, it's given you a sense of responsibility of the world around you. So, for instance, throughout my four years, each year was sectioned based on like different, how do I say this? Different ideas and different, um, how do I say it? Sorry, I'm trying to figure out the word, different opportunities and different aspects, thank you. Aspects of it, so for example, sophomore year, which was honestly my favorite year for AGS, it was based on the United Nations, and as a class, we got to focus on being like Model UN, representing different countries throughout the world and speaking on global topics. Another thing too is, for example, junior year, which we focused on debating, which we know in the United States, there's a lot of debates that go on, and globally too. Throughout all this, I feel like honestly, AGS has been able to expand my knowledge and make it to where I'm more aware of what's going on around me. So, it's truly something I don't believe anyone should pass up. I feel like it's a great opportunity, and I feel like every district should have something like that.
Okay, I definitely agree with what Gabe said. When I originally, freshman year, joined AGS, I wasn't exactly understanding of what it was, and I wasn't 100% on board, but after these three years of part of AGS, I can say this opportunity has given me and all my other classmates, I can say it's something anyone who has the chance should take it, and I hope more kids get that chance. Throughout the years, I've become a part of programs like AFS Women in STEM, and got to speak into women all around the world, all interested in STEM, which is something women aren't usually represented in, as we can see. And I got to meet them, I got to create projects with them to help better our world and better my community. We've also, as Gabe said, tackled different aspects of the world, like Model UN, like debate, and also our futures, our colleges, what we want to do for the world to better it. And I can honestly say that this is a unique experience that's really bettered me and bettered my classmates. And when I look to the rising freshmen, I can say, if you have this opportunity, you should take it, because it is honestly gonna change. Thank you.
Yeah, it's true, it's true. So, so one thing about the Academy of Global Studies too is, why do we do it? It's for the kids, it's for them, it's to hear those stories. And yes, they do give an extra hour a day to school for all four years of their high school career, and that in and of itself is gonna set them to be successful for when they get to the next level. Coming to school for nine hours versus eight hours a day, or eight hours versus seven, you're always gonna have more opportunity and set yourself apart from the general student body. So, that, to answer Mr. Smith's question, there we go.
Hello, I, I want to say good evening, just to see if you guys are a little more with it now. Good evening. I'm Amber Strausser, I'm the, one of the assistant principals at the high school, and I'm the principal that works exclusively with AGS and also works with our seniors. So, um, as, as we enter an exciting week, um, with this evening and, and getting the, the designation as a GIST school, with also, we will take two of our yearly trips this week. We will send freshmen off to Michigan on Wednesday morning, and I will accompany some awesome seniors to Chicago this weekend. AGS provides a lot of opportunities for our kids. Witten Woods provides a lot of opportunities for our kids. We have worked, uh, this is my, I think, 11th year in the district that Mr. Martin and I came into the high school together, 11 years ago. We have, we have embraced the program that was already running successfully with AGS as a part of the high school, and then worked to expand the global education, the project-based learning, the use of technology, the understanding the world around us, and expanding that to the entire high school, to really make sure that our students are walking into their next chapter, whatever that next chapter may be, with a set of skills that they used to call soft skills, but now we know are the skills that every employer is looking for. So, the, what we're, what we're able to provide to our students with the programming that we offer, with, with project-based learning, with working with new tech, and all the things that we provide, we are truly the hidden secret of the Cincinnati area. And part of the partnership that we're speaking about tonight, when we first met and talked about this partnership, a big part of it was talking about, we want people to understand who you guys are. This is someone that's coming in from an outside organization saying, we see the greatness just being in the building a little bit, and we want to make sure that everyone around understands that greatness. There are schools clamoring for that all over the world, and we want to make sure they come in and see the greatness, but we also want to make sure that everybody in our community sees it as well. So, just excited for the partnership, excited to be a part of Witten Woods, and excited to see us continue to grow and do great things for kids.
Well, I won't speak as long as Ms. Strausser did, but Ms. Strausser, she's a little humble. She does a great job leading AGS. This is her first year as the principal on the principal team, leading AGS, and she does an outstanding job, so I'm super excited about the work she's doing along with Mr. Amstead to ensure that our kids have every opportunity possible. One of the things that I like about this evening, that happened this evening, too often, if you know me, you hear me talk about us telling our own story. When we have young people, like the two that spoke this evening, and talk about their experience and their opportunity, and given the opportunity to tell their story, their Witten Woods story, is second to none. There's amazing things happening in our school. You know, too often in society, they want to focus on the small percent of issues that's just a reflection of society that schools face on a daily basis. It isn't new, those are societal issues, but if I have 1,300 kids, I have 1,250 doing unbelievable, amazing jobs. So, I, I am super excited to have the opportunity to hear our young people tell their story, talk about the things that they're involved in and how important it is to be a warrior. Super excited about that. So, uh, the Academy of Global Studies, as Ms. Strausser already spoke, Mr. Amstead already spoke, it gave, when me and Ms. Strausser came into the district, it gave us an opportunity to see what was possible for every kid that walked through the door. That's what it's about. Opportunities for every kid that walks in the school, in the school. When we came in the door, the Academy of Global Studies was really starting to identify itself and finding its way and finding its niche. And for us as principals, we were charged with the whole idea of really pushing the envelope and realize that we had a responsibility to every kid that came through the door to get the opportunity, which is why we expanded some of those attributes of Academy of Global Studies, like new tech. We wanted to, we wanted to truly be able to articulate to our families of every kid that came through the door, that we're putting our best foot forward, and every kid is getting a true opportunity to have this amazing educational experience. So, so that's what we wanted to make sure that we were able to say and truly feel it in our soul and our heart, every time we had a conversation about what we were attempting to create as far as teaching and learning for Witten Woods students. And I believe that we've made leaps and bounds in that direction, and I'm super proud of the work and the proof's in the pudding, which is our kids. Which is our kids, and you can clap for that, because that's pretty exciting. One of the things about what we do, our work is never done. We're always trying to get better. This new partnership is the perfect example of us trying to get better, trying to create more opportunities, trying to get the word out about who we are, trying to give us additional opportunities to tell our own story, which is extremely important in today's society, with a school having the ability to tell their own story and not allowing folks who've never visited us, never walked through our hallways, don't know our kids, never met our kids, to tell the story for us. So, a partnership like this is extremely important, and we're extremely excited to have two very esteemed guests from the GIST Foundation to come and present our leadership and our students a, a little gift and maybe say a few words. So, can we welcome them to the podium, please?
Sure, so my name is Faith Snodgrass, and I'm joined tonight by a fellow team member, Jessica Ye. As was mentioned earlier, the Global Educational Community started with a small group of educators from around the globe, and we met and quickly realized that it's so important in today's interconnected world that we learn from one another, both teachers and students alike. So, um, we developed, we were based at Stanford University and developed a model using what research tells us works best, what's most effective. And while we have schools outside the U.S., we didn't have one here. So, we began to look for a school that shared our values and had lots of areas that are included in our pillars already in place. And one of the most important parts of this search was finding a leader who was innovative, progressive, and able to move things along. We know change is hard in every organization, and certainly, schools are no different. So, it's been an absolute pleasure to walk alongside Justin Emstedt, his, his fellow teachers, and his amazing students that we're more and more impressed by every time we see them and interact with them. So, in conclusion, it's just certainly my honor to recognize the global, the Academy of Global Studies at Witten Woods High School as a global, innovative, strategic, transformative school, the first one in the United States. Woo-hoo!
Alright, tighten it up, folks.
Ready? One, two, three.
Fantastic, thank you. No, there's, there's one other piece that I wanted to just mention, and I, I really didn't want this to be on the mic, but I really went back to count how many awards we've given Josh Amstead. I can tell you, there is a coincidence, so we did this little mathematical formula. Every time we give him an award, another little kid comes out.
You're not lying.
I don't know what the motivation is, sir, but whatever it is, it's working. So, the goal is 10, 10 awards, that's the goal. Thank you. Okay. President, President Bryant, there is another award that goes to a, um, very distinguished gentleman who, his mission is, is, is education, but it's also provided in safety. And I'd like to, um, prevent, present the Creative Spirit Award to Chief Jim Hallworth, Green Hills Police Department. So, I had the pleasure of meeting the chief, and one of the things that he said was, Superintendent, I need to know how to make schools feel better for kids. And usually, the, the police come when there is an issue. He says, I need a presence in the school when there's not an issue. So, he comes often with some of his team, and they come to the south campus on a regular basis, so the kids can be familiar with him and not be afraid of the police, but know the police are here to protect and to serve. So, when he gave me the idea and said, hey, listen, what do you think about it? A great idea, we appreciate you very, very much, and maybe some of our young people might decide to become police officers.
Love it, we need them, we need them.
Yes, yes, I know that-
I see a couple tonight that talked that might be able to do that.
Yeah, I know that was, that was Brandon Smith's goal, to become a police officer, but he decided he couldn't handle some of the rigor, and, uh, so he became a musician instead, but it's okay, alright, we still need you where we need you, sir. Alright, so Chief, a few words, here you go.
Thank you. No, it's an honor and privilege to be able to come in the schools. You know, when I started here September 1st, so I haven't been in Green Hills very long, I did 31 years in another department, retired and came here to become chief. Uh, and it's something I recognized right away that I want to be a part of the schools. And thankfully, after meeting with Superintendent Smith, uh, it's been a great opportunity. I can tell you, I walk through, my officers, on day shift, we walk through these halls right here, and there's a bunch of kids sitting there, and we get nothing but a bunch of waves, which is great. And talking to some classes that I've done, had some hard questions, very hard, difficult questions, but it opened up a lot of dialogue, and my hat's off to the kids for asking them, you know? I mean, it's truly amazing, a sixth grader, and some of the questions that I got, so, it's awesome. So, it's just a little bit that we can do, we're not in here for discipline or anything like that. We just come in here so everybody knows we're here. We'd rather do this than come in during an emergency or something like that. Plus, our officers get to know the schools, get to know the layout of the schools in the event there is an emergency, and get to know the faculty and staff within the schools. So, we enjoy it, and we thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to do it.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Got to get a picture, Anthony. Yes, sir.
Oh, he snuck in on me.
I want you guys to see all of this stuff that he has on, this is pretty amazing. Weighs about 8,000 pounds. Folks- Folks, let's give the chief another hand, please. Madam President, that concludes our announcements for today. Hmm? The what?
Okay, they're not here. Okay, thank you. I had another thing on.
Yeah.
So the next item on the agenda is 3.01, a recess.
Okay. Recession.
We are going to change up the agenda items ever so slightly. So Vice President, would you make the motion?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Steve Denny as a Superintendent of the Wynton Woods City School District beginning August 1st, 2024 through July 31st, 2027.
I will second that motion.
All right, that motion has been first and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. That motion carries with all four of us voting yea. So Mr. Denny, we'd like for you to come up. This is out of order. This is actually Agenda Item 12.01, Board Motions and Recommendations. We'd like to thank you for the service to communities. We'd like for you to come up.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, Board. I'm, I'm honored. It's a tremendous privilege to be able to step into this role. And I'd like to thank the Board, first of all, for their consideration and selection. I'd also like to thank Mr. Smith for his support as well and, and Mr. Seymour. And I, I wouldn't be here without a great team. We have a wonderful team in the district. We have great students. We have great families. We have a great staff. We have great communities and a lot of support. And I'm just very much looking forward to assuming this role and continuing to build upon all the successes that have happened here and help us to shine. I think the vision is for people to be able to look at Wynton Woods and say, I, I'd like to be there. I want to go there. That's where I want to be. And I think we can continue to build on that, generate momentum and just continue to, to make this a great place to, to live, to grow, learn and work. So Board, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity and really looking forward to it. I'd also like to, to thank my wife, Karina, who's here this evening. Can't do it without her either, so just appreciate everyone. And thank you so much for the opportunity.
Great. Would like to get a picture with the board?
Before you get the picture, I'd like to do something.
Yes.
So 11 years ago, Mr. Penny cuff, who was the Board President, gave me this special pen and I'm going to give it to you. And it can't help you very much, but it is a good pen. And one of the things that he said is, Superintendent, when you wear it, wear it with pride, wear it with dignity and make sure that you wear it with fidelity. So I'm going to give it to you and thank you for everything that you're going to do in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And thank you, Mrs. Denny, for picking out this suit. If you get nervous, speak into the pen. If it starts talking to you, that's a bigger problem.
So we'd like to get a picture with the board. The members are here too, with you too. All right, Board.
All right, let's get a solo shot with Mr. Denny. We're going to get one with your wife and then one with just you.
Did you get a solo shot?
Yeah.
You did. Okay, perfect. Great, thank you.
I know it can't happen because of the months that are coming up that are warm months. I am going to miss our four o'clock in the morning conversations about the snow days. And there you go.
Thank you. Thank you for the members of the audience who stay at my behest. I appreciate it. I just wanted someone to witness this as we hand over the gavel here soon from Mr. Smith and all his hard work to Mr. Denny. So thank you so much. And thank you guys for allowing us to kind of go out of order with our agenda. We appreciate it. So the next item on our agenda is 4.01, Public Comments. Mr. Seymour, do we have any public comments?
I am the CME.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to Agenda Item 5.01. Do we have a representative from WWTA, Wynton Woods Teachers Association? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is 5.02, Ohio Association of Public School Employees, an OPEC rep. Do you have anyone from OPEC here? Okay, moving right along. Agenda Item 6.01, To Way the Reading of the Minutes. Board, motion is in order.
Madam President, I'd like to waive re-reading of the minutes for the following meetings. December 18th, 2023, February 20th, 2024, February 22nd, 2024, February 23rd, 2024, February 26th, 2024, March 4th, 2024, and March 11th, 2024, at 4:00 and 6:30.
Thank you. Is the motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Mr. Seymour, can you call for the vote?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes 4:01. The next item on the agenda is 6.02, To Approve the Minutes as Presented. Board, a motion is in order?
I'll move that we approve the minutes from the special meeting December 18th, the meeting February 20th, the meeting February 22nd, February 23rd, February 26th, all 2024, March 4th, 2024, and March 11th at 4:00 and 6:30, 2024.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Spielman.
I'll second.
Motion first and second. Do I have any discussion?
No.
No discussion. Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Ms. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The approval of the minutes pass 4:01. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, Financial Statements for February 2024. Mr. Seymour, you have the vote.
Yes, you have the financial statements before you. The month, the year-to-date revenues in the general fund are at 44.3 million. Our month-to-date were 13.8 million for mostly of real estate taxes advances of 11.6 million and our state foundation of 1.8. The year-to-date expenditures in the general fund are at 37.1 million. For the month, expenditures of 4.9 million. We are currently on our general fund running approximately 4% under budget or approximately 2.3 million. And then on the last page, I share with you the financial activity for all funds and their total balances. All balances for all funds are 27.7 million as of the end of February.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order?
I'll make a motion.
That, those are submitted for audit.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So let the financial statements for February 2024 be submitted for audit. My apologies. Next item on the agenda is 8.01, Treasurer Investments. Mr. Seymour, you have the vote.
Yes, our investments for the month of February yielded $122,995. Of that, the general fund received $109,050 and the building funds are still earning interest for $13,950.
Boy, now I'm correcting saying there's a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, School Reports. Superintendent Smith, you have the vote.
Yes, Madam President and Board, since we just returned from spring break, I think the conversation should be shifted around just so the public can understand how the celebration of excellence went, in your opinion. So conversations from the Board.
Oh, from us? I'll let my colleague start.
I don't mind the start. I truly enjoyed both celebrations. I thought they were phenomenal. It's always amazing to me just to see how amazing our young people are and the things that they use their creative minds to come up with. One of my favorite things here at the South Campus, and we kind of talked about it, was one of the classrooms, they took their own personal heritage and created these, like, kind of shadow box examples of where they came from, which was with different artifacts and things, which was just so cool. And I'm just always impressed by some of the things that our, our teachers and our students come up with. And, you know, it just goes to show that, you know, we have some great, great kids in our district. And if anybody wants to question that, they can come to our teaching and learning celebrations and they can see otherwise very, very quickly. So it's just an honor to be able to go to those every year. So I'm so glad we do that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
I spent the both, at the two evenings at both the South Campus and then the high school, middle school. There were so many activities in the high school that I never made it to the middle school. It was spread around four classes, four presentations in each of four quadrants. And then there were presentations in the hallway. There was one on an xylophone that I, I heard and I thought it was an ongoing concert. And by the time I got there, it was over. And I was, it's like, Marlene, you shouldn't have talked so long. But it, it was really good. And, and then at this school, my wife and I tutor here, so we knew a lot of the teachers and, or a number of the teachers and we got to talk to them. But the most amazing was a first grader. And he did the best presentation of the night. He came and got us and brought us down to, to his group and presented about his, his grandmother's country. And he was, his wording was really good, but his gestures, his inflection in his voice, he was just, just a great presenter. And it was, we just, we asked him to do it again. It was so good. So there were just some real surprises that night.
Yeah, I agree. I think it was phenomenal night. When I was here, I got to hear the musical selection as a former band person myself. So hearing the young people perform and seeing the enthusiasm and the nervousness, you could see how nervous they were. But they did a phenomenal job in the presentations as I was going through. I was just amazed about the number of people that come out from the community, the parents that come, especially for the little kids. It speaks to how engaged our community is and how engaged our students are in the high school area. And I apologize because math is not my favorite subject, but there were some students that looked at different places across the world and they, like, looked at the pyramids and they talked about the mathematics beyond the pyramids and different angles and they had VR. I was amazed. I mean, it was way over my head. I'm like, okay, all right. But it was just amazing. They were engaged. They knew their subjects so well. Other ones did art and different types of impressionist art and what their favorite artwork was. All the students were able to speak to their projects. I'm going to use your word, Superintendent, with fidelity. It was just amazing because you have young people who are not afraid to engage with adults and they don't know you. You're just a stranger that comes up and they're talking to you about their project and why they chose what they chose or how, when it was assigned to them, what they were able to do with the assignment. So it was phenomenal.
Well, I went to one of the sessions and it, it, it wasn't a session that you would have actually thought about, but this, this young man, and I'm going to actually have him come and present because his insight was actually phenomenal. And it was about how society treats pets, pets, dogs especially, is a reflection of how society treats itself. And he talked about homeless animals and how people don't care for them and it's a reflection of how sometimes society doesn't care for homeless people. That presentation absolutely was amazing. And I'm thinking, where did you get this idea? He says, because I see these stray animals all around in the community, but then I see people that are treated the same. And if society could just kind of bundle them together, we would be better people. I was like, whoa. It gave me chills. And I almost went out and bought a dog, but I didn't. I, I said, no, 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 not today. But I, I, I have to have him come in because that's something that people really don't think about. And we are society as one. It's how we treat each other and everything under the sun. So, but I, I appreciate the, the feedback and I'm sure the, the principals and teachers and paras and everyone else and the incredible food service department would really appreciate the feedback. Talking to other superintendents along the way, most superintendents said they would never try this. They would never put on a showcase because of what they think could happen. Well, I, I think we put on a showcase because of the possibilities of what does happen. So I applaud everybody in the room for their participation and their effort. And hopefully the celebration of excellence lasts another, you know, 100 years. Okay, all right.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent, the next item on the agenda is 9.02, First Read, Revised Board Policies.
Yes, Board, these are all first reads, but they come out of Operations and Relations. And the first one is Student Records Policy 8330. The second one is Transportation 8600, Transportation by School Van 8650, Public Attendance at School Events 9160, District Support Organizations 9211. And then there's a revised policy 9270, Equivalent Education Outside of the Schools and Participation in Extracurricular Activities for Students Not Enrolled in the District. Look at that policy very carefully, 9270, because it could have some implications later on based on enrollment and based on participation.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. Next item on the agenda is 9.03, Facilities Update.
Yeah, Mr. Denny is going to come up and give us the updates. Are you going to do Phase 1 and 2?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and again, good evening, Board. I'm pleased to be able to provide a brief facilities update on progress at the Future Early Childhood Center, Central Campus. Just quickly, Phase 1 is approximately 98% complete. Some change orders that are being processed to, mostly from impacts of Phase 2 that are now it interacts. We were able to successfully relocate the Human Resources Department staff to the newly completed Room 170, which is the future school-based health center. And in so doing, we've been able to focus in the main office area, completing window frame replacement, a lot of Phase 1 scope, demoing out the old, some of the old plaster ceilings, doing some abatement work in there that has had to wait until this point. And then starting on the HVAC piping and controls so that, we're seeing a lot of good progress in that main office area. And there's also integration of the HVAC systems with the Phase 2 fire alarm system. So that's some places where Phase 1 and 2 overlap, if you will. And we've also got installation of fire dampers per some code requirements with the City of Forest Park that's happening as well. Phase 2 is about 55 complete, 55% complete, and that's by billing. It's actually a little ahead of that in terms of real progress. Billing lags behind by about a month typically. Again, room one-seventy is completed in, in its entirety, and it's a little carve-out that the city's given us in terms of occupancy. So, we've got an early occupancy there, and that's where the human resources staff is now located. Bleachers in the gym look really good, they've been installed, so that's very noticeable. There's a lot of HVAC work still ongoing in the building. Building automation system, and building will be smart and have those kind of capabilities similar to what you see in this building. Paint's going on throughout, LED lighting installation is going on throughout, drop ceiling grid installation going on throughout, drywall installation, and finishing is ongoing in the newer spaces, the extended learning areas that we've talked about. Some structural steel installation has been completed. Those inspections have been done, and they all passed successfully. So, some nice work there. Preschool classroom restroom sanitary lines are completed. As, as we've talked about, we wanted to ensure, to help support the five-star rating, that all the preschool classrooms had restroom capabilities. So, that's, that part's been completed. IT network infrastructure is in progress, the data center is nearing completion, and fire alarm and PA system are ongoing. So, there's a lot of trades onsite. If you happen to drive past, you'll see a lot of vehicles and a lot of construction workers. So, pretty pleased with the progress to date.
Yeah, Mr. Denny, have, have they had the opportunity to test the PA system?
Not yet, sir, no, no, it's not to that point yet.
Because you notice the difference when you have bodies in there and no bodies?
Absolutely.
So, they'll have to kind of run some tests just to make sure that,
Yes, sir.
you know, it can get through wherever we need to.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what about outside? Does it go outside as well?
I'll have to check the specs for that. I hope so. If not, that's something we should look at.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Super excited that that project's moving on, and the switchgear is no longer an issue.
Thank you.
You know, I was looking in your, you know, for your gifts for next year, Ms. Bryant, and I, I'm going to buy you a switchgear for Christmas. Just a little tiny one, so you can operate all your stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh two, Scarlet and Gray contract.
No, it's ten point oh one.
Oh, sorry, two point oh one, personnel schedules, my apologies.
The recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules. Schedule A, resignations. Schedule B, personnel employment, certificated. Schedule C, personnel employment, support staff. Schedule D, personnel employment, certificated and uncertificated, including extra duties. And then we have a final, which would be leaves, schedule E.
Board? Our motion is in order.
Madam President, I move, we approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Has been motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, have a discussion?
I do have one question on schedule B. Is that the, it looks like the contract periods are for two years, is that common? I, I've just not seen, this is the first one I'm looking at.
Yeah, this is the first time you've seen an administrator's schedule, so it's usually two years.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That was my question.
Good question, yes. Since all the administrators have been on two years, they would have to stay on two years unless there was, unless there was an issue where they're resigning or they're being terminated. And you can't give them a one year, you can do it one time, but you can't do it again. So, just keep that in mind.
I did notice that a couple of them have, like, either expiring licenses or certificates, so just for them to be cognizant that they've got some things to do.
Oh, they are very aware.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Trust me. Yes, good point, thank you.
Any other discussion, Board?
So, so I had asked, ask you a question about getting feedback. We have to, we have to give notice on the schedule Bs by June first, it is correct?
Schedule what?
Schedule B.
The certificated staffs? Schedule, is that what you're referring to, Mr. Seymour? I mean, Mr. Spielman?
So, those have to be a-
Should be March.
Oh, it's March?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's March.
I didn't answer my question.
It is March.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
You ready for me now?
Yes, Mr. Seymour, speak off for the vote.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye. The vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh two, Scarlet and Gray contract.
Yes, Madam President, I know that the Board has had some conversations about the Scarlet and Gray contract. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it in its entirety, but one of the things that the contract does, it gives us the flexibility to have seasoned workers like we need to. I know it's some, at one point in time, the district hired its own custodians. And trying to get twenty-plus custodial regular people was difficult. And that's why it went to an outsourced opportunity, which Scarlet and Gray was the best choice for us. And so, if people want to know, why are we outsourcing our custodial services? It's because the other, trying to have it in-house was too irregular. There's new agreements with Ohio Revised Code that says that a part of your budget must be dedicated to custodial services, because what the Ohio Facilities Commission doesn't want you to do is have a new building, and now it's not, it's not taken care of properly. So, they put those provisions in there, and those are not optional. You must have a custodial team that can manage the building on a regular basis.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board, motion is in order?
I'll make a motion to approve the Scarlet and Gray cha, contract as presented.
Has been motioned, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So, when reviewing the contract, who currently cleans the ECC? Because I didn't see that in the contract. The ECC and the, the-
Community.
CO.
Oh, CO.
So, I'm just, I'm just trying to identify, when I was reading, I was identifying specifically North Campus and South Campus. I can see that's very well covered, but then I wondered about the ECC, I didn't see that in there, or CO. And then I wanted to know, moving into the new building, how does that affect the contract?
You mean the E triple C moving into, yeah?
Great, great questions, Mr. Smith. So, E triple C currently is cleaned by a combination of Winton Woods employees, and, well, employee, I should say, and Scarlet and Gray evening cleaning. It, it's built into the numbers you saw, it's not extra. It's not laid out quite that way, that's something maybe we could take a look at for future. Rolling into next year, the cleaning specifications would be the same. So, it would, we employ a day porter there, or a Winton Wood, we sometimes, Winton Woods, we use the term head custodian. So, we have a head custodian at the E triple C that's employed directly by the Board, by the district. And then the evening cleaning is done by Scarlet and Gray. The, in the future, it'd be the same. Now, we're going to have to reevaluate based on square footages, if that's sufficient. And it might be necessary to, to, to adjust that, because it's a bigger building, just in all transparency. The community building and CO are cleaned by Winton Woods staff. Those are custodians directly employed by the district.
Okay, so we have basically a mixture of employees and contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct, yes. Did I answer all your questions?
Those are the questions I had. Bill, did you have a question?
With the size of the contract, did we, have we looked at other providers for the, for a similar service?
It, well, we did RFP in two thousand and eleven. So, Scarlet and Gray was the most cost-effective, best model at the time. That has not really changed in the marketplace since then. What we look at is, what would the cost be for us to do it ourselves? And it's-
I don't think that's a question.
Yeah.
You know, on, on that kind of an expenditure, are, and I, and I understand the idea that it's difficult to compare apples and apples. You know, you know what you have with these people, but if you have somebody else, what is it? What is it, what's required? But, but I've done RFPs in the past, and, I mean, this, this is a healthy contract per, per annual
Yes.
payment. So, I was just wondering if we had looked at other resources where we could just get a, a second or third bid to go, it's comparable. We're, we're going to stay with these guys, but it's, the, the pricing is comparable.
Yeah, Mr. Spielman, one, one of the things that was insightful for me as I reviewed the contract, all of the supplies, so supplies change, values and prices of supplies change. If those supplies go up, doesn't matter to us, Scarlet and Gray covers that cost. So, I think we cover the paper part of it.
Yes, sir.
And they cover all the cleaning materials and everything else, because that's where companies make their money. I mean, you've been in the business, so you understand. They'll mark the prices up on some of those commodities, and you can't say, you can't use cleaning solutions, you have to buy it. But if that price change, it won't change to me. So, the, the contract looked good based on knowing what that supply chain could do.
And I understand that, just looking at a comparable service, what would that cost us? And, and is it close? The other thing, in, in this contract, there's no liability insurance for them. So, I mean, I was just looking in here, and, you know, they accidentally take a mop, a mop stick, and, you know, they hit a sprinkler head, and we set one off. There's, there's no liability coverage on their part. And then they have workman's comp, but are we, are we verifying that they're following I-nine procedures? That's up to them, and I know that's not our problem, but...
I'd have to look into some of the things you're raising to be quite transparent with you. I, I mean, I assume they do those things, they're, they're a very well-run company.
Yeah.
Part of the reason we selected them, and we continue to value the way they provide the service, is the way they supervise, their supervisory structure. It was better than any of the firms that proposed. The, they have a competitor that's been in several districts around us, that where they were, were with Scarlet and Gray, they went to this competitor, and then they went back and lost money and employees in the process. So, we've seen some things transpire around us, I've had conversations with other districts, other business managers. Scarlet and Gray is basically considered the school cleaning specialty firm in our area. There's really only two or three firms that really work in schools. They tend to come up fairly commonly as the most efficient and the most affordable.
So, the, the people that have switched to somebody else have switched back to-
Yes, sir, and a neighbor of ours actually-
There were, there were companies that had a lot of issues when, around COVID and cleaning. We didn't have those same, those issues, and we use that as our guide to say, in the most difficult time of a school season during COVID, they came through every time without any issues whatsoever. And we use that as, as our guide to say, that was a reputable company. Because people lost companies along the way when COVID came, based on the demands of, we need this cleaned three times, we need you to spray this down, we need you to wipe this down. They never had an issue with any of our requests or any of our demands.
If, if I might, Mr. Smith. Mr. Spielman, your question about liability insurance, we do require any contractor onsite to provide us with a COI certificate of insurance.
It's major.
Meaning the district has an additional insured in the minimal amounts of one million per occurrence, two million aggregate. So, that's required across the Board.
Okay, so they do, so they would have submitted that to-
Correct, just as a normal process of-
I agree, but they don't, they don't say anything about that in the contract at all.
That's a good catch, you're, I, I hear you. Yes, sir.
We'll go back and look at it again, just to make sure it's in-
Yeah, it's, and, and if they're doing that, then we should have that noted in here.
Understood.
Good point.
Yeah, understood.
I do want to ask another question. The addresses, I know right now, we just have the North and the South Campuses, but with the E triple C coming on board, should we add that address as well, because you said it'd change the square footage?
Yes.
For the, so will there be an addendum to this contract, since it's not currently occupied a hundred percent? Or is this, or would you, because when is this contract?
I think, I think what you're asking, Ms. Bryant, is, we don't want to just assume.
Correct.
And we want to make sure that it's in, in documentation.
Correct, that it's there, along with-
We want the addendum in place before this contract's signed. Otherwise, that addendum is like, you have a contract with us, and, you know, it's a change order, and we know what change orders, how, how change orders are.
I think we can move on that pretty quickly, Mr. Denny. You think?
So, you just, just to be clear, you're requesting that the address for the future E triple C be added to the list of services? And, and exhibit one, correct?
And what would that contract amount be? So, you will have, you know, from now till June first on this contract, and then the amount will go up or down based on the new building.
Yeah.
And that's a contract that I, I don't like signing when I know that they're going to come back in a few months.
Yeah, what's the time, what's the timeline on the contract so that we don't lose this opportunity? Where, because if, if we don't take Scarlet and Gray, they're going to go somewhere else, which we assume they would.
We're going to sign the contract.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, when, how quickly?
Didn't we have time, was it June, Mr. Denny, was that when they-
Yeah, but when those guys are out there looking for bids, they're not waiting, that's why we try to get ours done.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, it's, it is, it is in here, I'm sorry. I want to say it's May.
Okay.
But it's actually in the contract, I just need to-
Because they need to know.
I know we talked about it, I don't see it.
I believe it says May, Steve.
It is May.
Didn't, we had this conversation, right, Randy? We, oh, May, May thirty-first.
May thirty-first, okay, so.
May thirty-first, yes. And actually, that's when their contract actually terminates, so we shouldn't get too close to that date if we can, I would just ask.
So, with that being said, I'm not sure if we can, we've, we can approve, we can entertain approving with the expectation that those things are added.
That the addendum will be added for E triple C.
But if you add it, if they have an approved contract-
Or, we, we want this added to the contract.
We want this added to the contract before we approve it.
So, then that means we'll have to table this to next month's meeting. So, we're, then the, the issue will be, we're backing to the May thirty-first.
So, is it possible to table this into the work session?
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be better. You don't, we don't want it to April.
And then we can go into executive session to discuss that with the revision.
Understood, absolutely.
I would just like that, to know what that updated number is before we sign a contract.
Absolutely.
And that makes perfect sense, and it's not going to be a huge number in terms of, it'll be a smaller percentage of the total, but we'll find out.
And if we could get that, if, if they have the supply liability insurance coverage, that could be part of the contract.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you very much for the discussion.
Thank you very much.
All right.
So, we're going to table ten point oh two.
So, Mr. Spielman's going to withdraw his motion and have request to table it to-
Correct.
Yes.
To the work session. And we're not having the April work session, so which?
We're going to, we're going to be scheduled by April fifteenth.
We have to figure one.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't tie in there.
Yes, we, we're going to have one. Thank you.
That was a robust discussion. Wonderful. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh three.
Ten point oh three?
This is another.
Is proposal for overnight extended student trip?
Okay, so, we've had robust conversations about this trip as well. To the Board, I, I'm excited for the opportunity for the students, and I think that the people that are planning this know that for a trip of this magnitude, you have to do it in advance, so they're doing it in advance. However, I've sent several emails wanting to get the information, the letter, as it relates to the performances. To date, I have not received that letter.
Okay. So, there is-
So, the letter that you're asking for is the letter where they sent in to get, to request this?
Yeah, so, so that the-
So, that the choir would, the, the letter to request that the orchestra plays, the choir sings, and the band marches in the break.
So, the travel company has noted, and I believe I allowed Ms. Knighton to review it, the travel company has noted that we are not responsible if you don't get to perform. We will give you a trip, we will take you there, but we don't have anything to do with if you get to perform at Magic Kingdom or not, that's not our position. And they're very, very clear about that. So, if you don't get the letter that says that you've been accepted, then it puts the district in a compromising position, because we're raising funds for something that we don't know. And I know the band needs to start raising the funds, like, immediately. And so, I'm going to reach out to Ms., Ms. Ashbrook tomorrow and ask her if it would help if I made the call to them to say, are we going to get the letter? Because I think she's tried to do it, but we haven't received the confirmation that they'll be performing for all three groups. Three groups need to know if they're going to perform and not just take the trip.
And is there a confirmation window, like, do they tell you that they'll notify you by such and such a date?
Okay, so, for the Disney experience, usually it's about ten thousand applications that they're reviewing, because everybody wants to do it. And they look at, they look at your information, they review your tape. Whoever sent the information, hopefully it's been sent, and it meets their qualifications, because they have a criteria that they've set. How, they want to make sure that who's ever performing, it's a quality performance. And I do understand their issue. Brandon, you, you, you- Brandon, you, you facilitated or you knew about a trip with Disney before. Do you know how difficult it was to get the letter?
I think it's just, um, their timetable is not like our timetable.
Yes, sir. That's right.
So many people. And so, uh, this far out, they're still making decisions. And so, it's extremely difficult to get that guarantee this far out. But, and that's, you know, like I said, one of the points that you're bringing up. You know, we need that guarantee to begin to move the process forward.
Yes.
But as far as Disney, uh, you know, I, you know, I don't see them making that decision this month, you know?
Right, right.
In terms of being able to guarantee, because they're guaranteeing thousands of, of people.
You, you're right.
That still have to raise money and will still back out. So, there's a lot of things that, you know, have to get in motion for them and for districts and things of that nature. So, it, it takes some time.
And the travel company is being very careful, saying, we're, we're not going to guarantee, we'll guarantee that we'll get you there.
Yeah.
But as far as your performance, we're not going to put any pressure on Disney for you to do it.
Right.
What makes the situation a little more awkward is we're trying to get three groups to get that letter of performance. And it's the choirs, the orchestra, and the band. And each one of them should have a letter because they would be performing at different venues at, at different times.
That's correct.
The other part that makes it a little more odd is the band could get the letter, the choir and orchestra may not. That just makes it difficult because it changes. I think what Ms. Ashbrook was doing, and I think she was being very clever and, and very, um, responsible by adding more groups because it lowers the price. So, she's doing everything she could. But, uh, the fine print in there that I had to make sure that I read, uh, in its entirety was the part about the proposal for performance.
So, is, is this something we can table until next month's meeting to just give it more time and see if we have more information by then?
Yeah, I don't, so it doesn't happen until December. And I, I don't want this to fade away. But I don't know what the board can do as it relates to saying yes when there's some uncertainty about when.
And given the, um, makeup of our district, the more time we can give for fundraising, fundraising, the better. Because the district cannot hold the weight of a six-figure trip.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, if we, if we don't know a timeframe, if we keep it on our agenda every month so that we can approve it as soon as, as we hear, so that fundraising efforts can take place as soon as possible.
So, I, I have a couple of companies that are ready to, to participate. But I'm not going to get them to send money when I don't know. Because it's hard sending money back.
So, just for the purposes of the public and purposes of our agenda and our minutes, um, so Randy, we will table this discussion and it will be a reoccurring agenda item until such time as we have received clarity or notification that our band, choir, and orchestra have been invited to participate in this experience.
And President Bryant, um, if you'd like for it to be on the agenda every month, we can do that. Or it can be on the agenda when we have something worth reporting.
I, I, I like the latter better.
Yes, me too. Yes. Because otherwise, it's just a stalemate.
We'll say the same thing, everyone.
Right.
Sounds good.
And kids are sitting there biting their nails, watching Waycross, all thousand of them, and, uh, just hoping that it happens this month, but not again.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Smith, I would like you to follow up, like you said, to see if you can put some pressure on.
Most definitely.
Uh, because I don't want our students to miss out on this opportunity because we have to keep tabling it.
Right.
And so, uh, being a, a member of the choir, the band, and orchestra when I was in school, I did trips with all of them. And those trips are absolutely invaluable to the education process.
You can't replace it for anything else.
Yeah, some students, this is the first and only trip that they will ever take in their lifetime.
Totally agree.
So, you know, I don't want us to, you know, hold this so long and then we miss out on the opportunity. But I also understand, we need to understand the liability as a district and, and make sure that we, the district, aren't liable for anything. So, I just want us to, to make sure we're doing our due diligence, to make sure our students get this opportunity if possible.
And if the district has any energy, you know, a, a pressure email is one thing, a phone call is one thing. But if you guys want me to go to Orlando to talk to them personally, I can do that.
I'll go with you.
I think we could, we could, we'll, we'll table that one till May.
No, and I speak for myself too. I, I'm in huge support of the kids having an opportunity
Absolutely.
Um, to join in this because not just the performance at Disney. I mean, there are a lot of workshops and really invaluable things that they can access on this trip. I mean, I read through the itinerary. There are a lot of really great opportunities that I would love for them to be able to access. You know, it just makes sense for them to go if they're invited to perform and, and have that opportunity. So, um, you know, if they can't take part in the actual program and, and everything, there's not a point really for them to go. So, I, I want them to be able to access everything that they can. So, I 100% support it if you have the right information.
And if you look at, if you look at the proposal that Ms. Ashbrook sent, it has rubrics language in there about some of the, some of the things that they're supposed to learn as it relates to, uh, standards. So, it's not just a, a hodgepodge of sorts. It's a real instructional strategy that is kind of manifested into, do we have the proposal language or not? All right.
Thank you.
What does the payment structure of that look like, of that trip? When is the deposit due? Do we have that information?
We are not, we're, I don't think we're actually running the, the service. They're going through a, another vendor, I believe. Mr. Seymour, do you know?
Not certain, but I believe they're going through a third-party vendor and it won't run through our office.
No.
So, I don't know if the children are contracting directly with the vendor. I, I don't know.
I would be interested to know that information.
Yeah, so once we get the acceptance, we can make sure we have all those details before we...
Yeah, only because I, I do understand Brandon's question. Once you wait so late, then they start rushing the payment. Because there's somebody else in line waiting to take that trip.
And I don't want it to be one of those things where it could have been a hundred dollars a month, but because we wait, now it's five hundred dollars, you know, every two months. And it's like, well, how are we going to get?
That's a good point.
You know, so I just, you know, I just want to look at all of those things so we can make a very well...
We would really need to know if the contracts between the child and the company or the district and the company, correct, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, because if the, if the deal goes well, everybody's happy. If they're talking about reimbursing funds and it's a third-party vendor, we're not responsible for that reimbursement. But parents would call the school because that's what they know to do.
And I know we've used Bob Rogers Travel in the past, so I know we have a good working relationship with using them. But from a contractual standpoint, I'd like to know what that looks like.
Yeah, very good. I will make that call as early as tomorrow.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, next item on the agenda is 10.04, second read, new and revised board policies, Superintendent Smith.
Yes, the, uh, policies that you will be voting on tonight will be, um, finances, board of revisions, complaints and counter, counter complaints, care of students with active seizure disorders, fair labor standards, 6,700, 7440 facility security, 8120 volunteers, 8110 school calendar, and finally, 5330 use of medications.
Board of motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the second read, new and revised board policies as presented.
It's been motioned in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. And this is probably for Mr. Seymour. On policy number 6240, it talks about, uh, the arms-length sale. And, and it says commercial and residential. And I thought we were only doing commercial.
We only, we only will do commercial, but the law permits both. We're only doing commercial. Okay.
Yeah, we've never gotten to the residential part.
Yeah, no, never.
But it says residential.
But it, I think it says, it's there just as a option.
Did you want me to go after Spielman's residence?
Okay, that's what, I just wanted to make sure.
Good point.
No other questions?
I do have a question about the medication, um, policy and the seizure policy. Let me get back to, um, so the use of medication looks like, and thank you, because the last time it was revised was April of 2018. As you know, things change.
Things have changed.
Things have changed a lot. So, one of the things that is new here, Superintendent, that I want the public to be aware of, students shall be permitted to possess and self-administer over-the-counter topical sunscreen products while on school property or on a sponsored event, which before that was seen as a medication and all of those liabilities that went with using a med, even though it was an over-the-counter. So, thank you for that progressive stance on that.
Well, President Bryant, the reason it came to terms is, um, on the playground in another district, far, far away, uh, not Wynton Woods, uh, during a, um, a kindergarten program where kids were out playing, uh, some kid got hold of mom's, um, sunscreen and was just putting it on every child. And so, uh, the state kind of got involved with the policy as it relates to, uh, topical ointments as far as... And a lot of parents had a lot to say about it because every kid came in from recess with this stuff. I don't know how much the little kid had, but everybody had it on.
Enough for everybody.
No. And it, and she, and, and the part that made it so kind of, kind of surreal, uh, she was not selective. It didn't matter what you looked like. Uh, you got the, you got the ointment. And, uh, kids were happy about it. That's all I can tell you.
But based on the previous law, that was not considered legal. Um, the other part of the medication policy is students who are experiencing an apparent opioid-related drug overdose may be administered Narcan
Yeah.
by the school nurse or any trained in, school employee, volunteer, or contractor to a, um, a student or other individual on school grounds in accordance with the board policy. And then emergency services will be contacted as soon as practical.
Yeah, we just hope that the paramedics, yeah, we hope that the paramedics take the lead on that.
Yes.
Yes.
Those things. And I don't remember if I can get back to the other one, the seizure disorder. I had a question about that one.
I was going to ask, I knew, it's a new policy, but I, I can't believe that we haven't had to deal with that before now.
Deal with what?
Um, the, 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 the policy, care of students with active seizure disorders. It's a new policy.
We deal with that every...
Oh, I know.
Miss Bray.
Yes.
So, she can give you another overview.
Yep.
No, I, I was just surprised that it's a new policy and we, we haven't had to have a policy about that before now.
Thank you, Ms. Bray. Yeah, this is just a revised policy.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Right. And any student that's been diagnosed, diagnosed with having a seizure or with epilepsy, there's always a healthcare plan. And so, when there's a healthcare plan, the student's team is on that plan to talk about, um, signs and symptoms, the medications. Um, so any student that's diagnosed will have a healthcare plan in their, um, accumulative file. And so, although, you know, this is a revised plan, that's always been something that's been in place.
You know, it's actually coded as a new.
Yeah, that's, it says it's a new, it's a new policy.
There may be some new language in there.
Our procedures have changed, have coincided with that policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see it's less modified. I just saw new and it's like...
Yeah.
Always look at the modification language at the end.
Yep. One of the things that's great about this policy and great about our district is that we do have here, um, in the south campus, we do have a healthcare center. So, we have professionals on staff and then we have our wonderful school nurses at our, at our building. So, I feel very confident that the students are getting the healthcare that they need. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And, and any, um, personnel that has not been trained, if they have a student in their classroom or that's in athletics or any extracurricular activity, um, those adults are trained to either administer or to look for signs and symptoms.
Great. Thank you.
And President Bryant, there's, uh, one other thing. I'd like for the, uh, board to take a closer look at policy 7440 and look at letter J. And it talks about programs, the use of video surveillance, electronic monitoring equipment, appropriate public areas in and around the schools, other district facilities, and on school buses. The program may also include, but not, include but not limited to all of these. So, the vaping and that letter J is about monitoring devices, including smoke and vape aerosol, monitoring devices in appropriate public areas in and around the schools and other district facilities. So, uh, when parents had some conversations about, well, my kid is out here, we're saying that this is part of our process. It's still part of our policy and the kids are on ground.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, so it's been motioned in second. We've had our discussion. Mr. Seymour, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Spielman?
Aye.
Mrs. Knighton?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 11.01. I think Superintendent Smith, you're going to provide the legislative report?
No, well, there's some special legislative, uh, information that's coming out. And so, Dr. Johnson and I agree that she would actually be ready to present it at the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 11.02, the Great Oaks Career Technical Report. Board, do you have the information? So, please read it at your leisure. Any questions? Next item on the agenda is 12.01, board motions and recommendations. We've already done that with the, um, announcement of Mr. Denny. So, we'll go on to 13.01, comments from members of the board. Who would like to lead us off?
I'll start. What a day. What a day. Uh, it's been a lot of great things that have happened today. Uh, it's just another testament to the incredible district that we have here at Wynton Woods. And, uh, I appreciate all the hard work of the students, especially our staff, our administration, our leadership, uh, just the acknowledgements and the partnerships that are coming down the pipe for us here at Wynton Woods. Um, thi- this is a great thing for our district. It's very exciting. Uh, I've been traveling extensively, uh, and I've been working a lot with, uh, Miami University and with some other school districts on some other things. And it's just amazing to see how other school districts are operating and trying to get to the level where Wynton Woods is now. Um, so a lot of people do have Wynton Woods on the radar and what we're doing here. And so, it's a testament to the hard work of our leadership, our students, and our staff. And I couldn't be more appreciative to be out on the road and say, yeah, I'm from Cincinnati. Oh, we're from Cincinnati, Arlington Forest Park. Are you in that Woods District? Yes, it's called Wynton Woods. That's what it's called. And I'm very, very proud to say that I'm, that I'm here at the Wynton Woods District. So, congratulations to, to every award winner. Congratulations to our district and our leadership on the partnership that is going to be, uh, what I think is the first step in a number of things that are going to be phenomenal for this district's future. And, um, as I always say, go Warriors.
Thank you. Would like to go next.
I'm not going to try. Um, I would like to congratulate again Josh Amstutz, um, just on, on, um, his passion for what he's teaching. And he sees his five girls coming, coming up and, um, so neat. Yeah. And Christina Deal, uh, got an award for teaching. And Amira?
Yeah.
Amira Adam, um, she's looking forward to going to Beijing for school. There's a teacher here in the school, Rose Yang, that's from China, uh, that came here with some programs. And I, I said, you need to go talk to Rose. She might be able to give you, first of all, some, some elementary help with the Chinese language, which you'll need. And, um, but just to make some, make some potential contacts. And congratulations to all the other award winners. Congratulations to Mr. Denny on this, uh, um, election and appointment. We're glad to have you on board. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm up. Um, first, I just want to say definitely to Amira Adams, um, Chief Holworth, Gabby Smith. Um, I know him affectionately as Mr. A because he taught both my babies. And, um, he is just a phenomenal human being and has a lot of passion for global studies and our kids at Wynton Woods. So, kudos to him and everybody who sews into AGS. It's a wonderful program. Both of my kids have been through it. Um, and such an amazing, um, honor and recognition to be named, um, as one of, as a GIST school. Um, that's such a, um, honor and recognition. So, um, a big congratulation. Um, that's such a, um, honor, uh, and recognition. So, um, a big congratulations to Mr. Denny. I'm so excited to be able to work with you, looking forward to it. Um, I know we'll, we'll all make a great team. So, uh, we're looking forward to it, and thank you for the work that you do now in the district. Gabe and Amira, who stood up there and talked about their experience in AGS, that's what it's all about. That's why I'm in this seat. That's what we do, why we do what we do, is those kids. I just love seeing the sparkle in their eye, um, when they get up and talk about their experiences. And, um, it makes me want to work that much harder, um, as your guys' board members. So, I'm excited about that. Um, as a member of both of these groups, I just want to give a huge, huge shout-out, um, for Women's History Month. I think, uh, we have phenomenal women that are doing good, good things in our district. Uh, parents, teachers, administrators, uh, students, um, Amira even talked about how she's done some pretty cool STEM work, um, and got to meet some pretty phenomenal women. So, um, I know that there have been a lot of International Women's Day celebrations throughout this month. Um, and so, cheers to the ladies. Keep celebrating. Uh, we got a couple more days. So, um, also, Happy Social Work Month to the social workers within the district, those who work, uh, outside of the district but live here. Um, I'm a social worker through and through, have been since I was a little kid. And, um, and so, uh, my heart is for that profession, um, and just kudos to all the people within the district that have that connection. So, um, thank you for allowing me to serve on this board, as always, um, and, and just honored to be here.
Great. You know, it's so hard to follow when everyone's covered everything. I'm like, well, did they mention, yep, they've mentioned that. So, I'm going to piggyback on everyone and say congratulations to all of our recipients. I want to say a special, um, thank you to Chief Haworth. It is not easy being a police officer. Police officers are near and dear to my heart. I have friends and family that are police officers, but to be able to come into a school and know that students are going to be curious about you, and you're not coming because the student's in trouble, but you're coming because you want to be involved in the community, is really a testament to how he wants to police. And being able to change the perception of policing for Black and Brown students and all students in the district is impressive. Um, thank you so much for Amira and Gabe. I looked at Gabe and I said, you know, I think you'd be a great presenter at OSBA. And he goes, I may consider it. I'm like, I, I think I kind of like that. So, I'm putting it out in the atmosphere. Um, the fact that we have a GIST school designation, and we are the only school in the United States, if I heard that correctly.
Correct.
I think that that is something that needs to be celebrated and that everyone needs to know, especially all of our compadres in Ohio. So, Brandon, when they ask you where you come from, they'll go, you come from that GIST school, that district that has the GIST designation. So, we want to celebrate all that you all do. Um, I want to also thank my fellow board members for all the hard work on our superintendent search. It was not easy. Um, it was a lot of long nights. Thank you, Randy, for the dinner. Lots of great collaborative conversations, and I am very thankful that Mr. Denny, um, has agreed and accepted our contract to be our next superintendent. But thank you to all of those who applied, to all those who were interviewed. Um, you are an impressive group, and it was not an easy decision. Um, but I truly believe that myself and that board, I speak for all of us here, we say we've made the best decision for our district moving forward. So, we're looking forward to, um, the next school year and finishing up this year and all the work that Superintendent Smith has done. The other thing I wanted to say, and, and this is a proud moment for me. When I've looked at the paper and see the news and see that other districts are struggling in different ways, and I do not see Wynton Woods on that list, I think that is a special shout-out to Superintendent Smith and to our treasurer, Mr. Seymour, that you have kept us in a position, not saying that we have money. We don't, we need money. Um, so, if we ask you all for some, don't say, she said we have money. That's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is we're in a different position than some of the other school districts. You know, we are not cutting people, and that really is that leadership. So, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Um, and for those who are being rifted at other school districts, please look to us. We'd love to have you if we have open positions. For the 22 bus drivers that are being displaced, we have jobs for you. So, please come, please apply. So, thank you all for all of your hard work and all that you do. Superintendent Smith or Mr. Seymour, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
All righty.
I do have one thing.
Yes.
Uh, I, I am very proud of you and all the work that you're going to do, all the work that you're going to do. Uh, there's truckloads of it, but you know what? You can drive a truck. You can handle it. And, uh, I think the board made a very good decision. Um, you've been working on this journey for a while. Uh, you asked me, uh, years ago, should you get your superintendent's license? And I said, yes. Uh, I remember I was going to seeing, uh, Dr. Tiberkey, and it was a snowy, cold day. And you said, um, he says we can do it by email, or he can do it by phone. I said, no, I, I'd like for him to meet you in person. And we made that trip in person, and it made a big difference. So, hey, congrats. All right. And that pen does have something in it. You can call it and talk to it, but it won't talk back, but it'll give you some practice along the way. All right. Okay. Kudos.
Thank you.
Oh, Amir.
Yes.
If you heard her story, her story was very compelling. She said, I turned down the opportunity at Miami for another opportunity. And she did not put us in a compromising situation where she wasted the opportunity and then halfway bailed out on us. That's the integrity of the kid.
And that's why I think her and Gabe need to speak next year at OSBA. I, the one thing that Mr. Martin said, and I'm glad you said that, Superintendent, is telling our story. That often the story that you hear from Wynton Woods is what we're not, or where we need to go, or we're, we're halfway there. We don't get to tell all the great things that happened in this district, and that's one of the things we want to be able to do. We will improve test scores. We will improve outcomes. We've got a phenomenal teaching and learning, um, directors. We're going to get there. I'm confident that we will. As we're getting there, there, we still need to tell our story, good, bad, and different. So, one of the things that we will ask is to make sure that we have that data, that we can share with the public, what we're doing well, what our opportunities for improvement are, and then continue to, to shout out our students who are doing amazing things in the district.
Very good.
Great. All right. The next item on the agenda is 14.01, and I do not think we have a need to go into executive session. Anyone? No? So, the next item on the agenda is 15.01. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.